Good evening and welcome to the Charter Township of Elmwood Planning Commission Regular Meeting convened on Tuesday, September 20th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in reciting the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Carrie, would you please call a roll?
Here.
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 Here?
Here.
Here. Okay, with Nate being excused, we still have enough members to constitute a quorum, so we can proceed with the rest of our agenda. We are on to Item D, limited public comment only on the agenda items. If you wish to address the commission specific to one of these agenda items, please come to the podium and identify yourself. There will be another opportunity for public comment at the end of our meeting, and since we have a public hearing scheduled within the body of the public hearing, there will be an opportunity for public comment. So I will open the first public comment at 7:01 PM. Seeing no one coming forward, we will close the first session of public comment at 7:02 PM. Item E, Agenda Modifications and/or Approval. The Chair would like to receive a motion to relocate Item I. Since we have a public hearing, it's been our tradition to launch right into that.
I would make a motion to move Item I to below what is now Item J, make Item J Item I and Item I, item J, and that would put the, move the public hearing to the floor.
Okay. We have a motion to relocate Item I to below J. J would become I and I would become J.
Support.
We have support. Any further discussion?
Just for clarity's sake, we're going to move new business and put a whole business that makes it easy.
Switching to Item J.
Makes it easy.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion is carried. We have moved old business to follow new business. Item F, Minutes of the August 16th, 2022 Meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of August 16th, 2022 as presented.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of August 16th, 2022 as presented.
Second.
We have support. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The minutes of the August 16th, 2022 meeting are approved as presented. Item G, Consent Calendar, approve, receive and file. Any questions for Sarah regarding the, her report?
And make a motion that we file the consent calendar as presented.
Second. We have a motion in support to file the consent calendar as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The consent calendar is filed. Item I, New Business. We have a public hearing for site plan review and special use permit 2022-05, request by the TCWC Holding Company LLC regarding property at 9440 and 9432 South Center Highway. And I will read the old parcel numbers, but we do have a new parcel number that I will follow that. The old parcels were 004-008-010-40 and 004-008-009-00 for an expansion of a previously permitted disilling tasting room offices and visitor center. The new combined parcel is 004-008-009-20. So I have, before I open the hearing, I have to read a statement. This public hearing is to receive input on the following matter. The site plan review and special use permit for TCWC Holding Company LLC, in accordance with the official notice, is now open. The hearing opened at 7:06 PM. The Elmwood Township Planning Commission would like to make it clear that it is bound by rules and laws and that these will be followed when weighing the case. In order to conduct the hearing within a reasonable time and to keep the subject at hand, you are asked to observe the following rules. The applicant will state their case fully and furnish the commission with pertinent information concerning the property. Township staff input, if any, will then be provided. Those wishing to speak for, against, or about the proposal will be heard. The public is encouraged to state their name and address if they are resident property owners or business owner, but are not required to do so in order to speak. Please refrain from repeating what has been said before, and please do not involve personalities. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes enforced by the vice chairperson or secretary in their absence. Be specific as possible. All statements or questions must be directed to the chairperson. Once the public hearing is concluded, the commission will undertake its deliberations and make a decision during the regular meeting. During its deliberation, commission members may ask questions of any person in attendance. Of course, you are not required to answer any question, but answering could be helpful to the commission. Any such questions and answers do not reopen public comment. The matter may be tabled or continued if more information is needed to make an informed decision. If the zoning ordinance allows the commission, allows the commission to make a decision, then the matter may be approved, denied, or approved with conditions. The decision may be delayed or postponed for cause as determined by the commission members. A rezoning or proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance will proceed with the commission's recommendation being forwarded to the Lillona County Planning Commission, which has 30 days to make a recommendation on the matter, and then to the township board, which will, which will the final determina, which will have the final determination to approve, not approve, or modify the matter. If the township board recommends a modification, the matter may be sent back to the commission for input in another hearing if necessary. A condition or special use will have at least one public hearing by the commission, and a final determination will be made by the commission. So the, as I indicated at the beginning of this statement, the public hearing is now open, and Chris, would you like to please give us an overview of your, your project, please?
Hello, my name is Chris Fredrickson. I'm an owner of Traverse City Whiskey and in turn TCWC Holding Company LLC. Our company, Traverse City Whiskey, began a, the planning phase of this project at 9440 South Center Highway a few years ago. The project has evolved since that time and been reshaped by several market conditions. And today, we're just, we're presenting a request for a special use permit to begin construction on the former cherry growers facility at that address.
Okay. Thank you. Do any of the commission members have any questions for Mr. Fredrickson? Thank you. We may have, some questions may germinate. We'll just ask you as they come up.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the public here, the public comment portion of the public hearing is now open at 7:10 PM. If there's anyone who wishes to address the commission, please come to the podium and do so.
Do you want our fire chief to speak during public comment?
Yeah.
Do you want to wait till?
We'll wait until, we'll wait until that. Well, I'll have you after public comment, chief. Thank you. Okay, hearing no, having no one come forward to public comment, the public comment of the public hearing is closed at 7:10 PM. Chief, could you please give us your review?
I apologize for not having anything written. It's a, but I have a copy in front of me, but I need to clean it up in order to get something to Sarah. The, this project has been going on for a while, and I can remember when it first came to us, there was an addition that was separate from the, there was a visitor center that was separate from the main production facility, the cherry growers plant. And so done a review at that time, and things were pretty good overall, and the owners have been willing to work with me and others involved to meet the needs of the fire department, at least. So this project, though, the, the new additions, see them attached to the main building, and it's changed things up for me a little bit. So when I sat down to review it, I had to look at things a little bit differently. Overall, the site has great access to it for the fire department, and including with the parking lots and stuff that they plan and putting in, it looks good. There is some concern, on the plans, it shows a drive on the south end for emergency and maintenance vehicle, vehicle access to get in there. It shows it landscaped over with some top, grass pavers they're addressed as. I don't know how that's going to be maintained in the winter time, but we're going to re, still be relying on that southern access, so that's a good, that's a concern I have. The, so how that gets addressed, or what that looks like in the future, we're still going to be looking at that as a way to get in. Specifically, as it relates, because got to look at these two kind of together, the warehouse is right there, and that's our direct access to the warehouse instead of having to maneuver behind the processing plant. So that's a concern. We're also looking at the height. We looked at that. It's not that big of a deal, but I'm, it's a large facility, and I would like to see about getting the, the north access, making sure that we can get a ladder truck in there, an aerial, which means just making sure there's a 26-foot wide path to a good portion of the building. Looking at the plans, it looks like it's not a big deal, but I wanted to make sure that was upfront with that and what's going on there. And that means, in addition, if we're going to put an aerial truck in there, that we got to have some way to get around it. So we need that second means of ingress to get in there. And we've got the front parking lots, and it looks great, parallel in Center Highway. Gives lots of direct access to the east side of the building. The trick is going to be making sure that we have access to the west side. So maintenance is going to be a big deal on the drives, keeping the snow back cleared and such, and making sure that we don't get it piled up in areas that would obstruct our, our clear line of sight. So I just double check that, I see that it's going to be stored along South Center Highway. Looks like there's plenty of room there, but winters up here, you never know. So is that going to be maintained? Is there a better location for the snow storage? Just a little bit, some concerns there. The big one that I'm having a hard time getting around is, we talked about all this water up there for the warehouse, but I don't see how it's getting configured into the production facility, which is where the additions are. So I don't know if it's being, if there's, back in the early days, I thought the whole building was going to be sprinkled, the whole production facility was, but with these additions, I don't know if they're going to be separate hazard areas, if that, those are going to get fire sprinklers, if the existing supply that's being indicated for the warehouse is also going to accommodate, if that's in the math, to help it accommodate the production facility and these new additions. Talking over 17,000 square feet of additional building onto the, the main production facility. So that's based on the numbers on their plans. So the water supply is ironing out what's going to happen, and we need fire protection up there for both facilities. I think that the owner's been more than willing to, to meet the needs of the warehouse, and just need confirmation of how the production facility slash the new additions is getting handled. And that's what's, that's what's missing from, in my, my arena. Other than that, there's not any significant hazards up there that we haven't already discussed or haven't planned for during the construction phase. The county will be dealing with most of that, I'm assuming through their, their permitting process and inspections, so. But that's where I, that's for, my review in a nutshell.
Thank you. With, I've got one question. With the water supply that current, that, if you recall when you reviewed it the first time, with, with these proposed additions, is there sufficient water supply onsite available? Or is that the, the question? I just want to make sure I thoroughly understand it.
I believe that with what the tank is up there right now, it's like one or the other in my, in my view, because when we looked at the initial review, back, I don't remember what year it was, 19, they, 2019, they, there wasn't a warehouse there. So it looked like we could potentially operate off of the existing well and tank system that was in the ground that was already there. But now that facility has to protect the warehouse as well as the production facility. And as far as the calculation on that, just get some clarity on that.
Okay. Yeah, because on the plan that I'm looking at, I'm seeing a proposed fire suppression water tank. Is that in addition to the one that's currently there?
I believe it's, it is in addition?
It's in addition.
Oh, wow. Okay. What, what's in the ground right there now? Nope.
It's just the well system.
It's just the well, yeah, so you got the well system, then you're going to add the, it's like 189,000 gallon tank up there, water tank, but.
Yeah, the, the proposed tank would be tank number two?
Is there, there is not a tank in the ground right there.
I don't believe so.
Yeah.
It's, it's a high volume well.
Yeah.
And to clarify, the, the new proposed tank would be used to furnish both the warehouse and the production facility.
So I don't know what the hydraulic calculations are on that. I need to see something on that.
Okay.
The, the chance that both systems would act, need to be running at the same time is probably not a need, but I'm assuming that the tank's going to serve, is the tank going to serve daily usage as well, or is it strictly suppression?
Suppression.
Yeah, so it's just a big ball, big tank of water up there for the what if.
Okay.
So.
That tank will be buried, Chris.
Above ground.
It's, it's, how do you deal with that in winter?
It's double walled, insulated.
Yeah, double walled, potentially circulation. Our, our engineers are working through that because there's no standing water.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's, that's huge.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the chief? Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Yes.
Chris, the driveway was eliminated probably because of the county road commission, basically, wanting to limit the access under the road roadway, the south drive.
The, the south drive. So the south drive has not, it should not have been eliminated. The strategy for the south drive, one, chief, we will work to clarify how that will be maintained during the winter. The idea behind the south drive is to keep it and maintain it, but use some type of landscaping to cover it so that it's not so aesthetically loud, but it, it will remain.
It'll be there, be you, okay, gotcha.
Yes.
Be usable for a fire truck, but.
Yes.
So maybe some pavers or something like that with grass or something.
Do I recall that you at one time said it was going to be gated with access for the fire department?
I'm, I believe that's being revisited.
Okay.
That will be a, a conversation, the, the gating in, in front of that drive will be a conversation with the fire department.
Thank you.
Yes.
I didn't mention that in my review, but he did. The gate was indicated, and that's not an issue for the fire department.
Any other questions for Mr. Fredrickson or the chief? Thank you.
Thank you.
So at, at this point, we will close the public hearing at 7:21 and begin our deliberations. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Sarah regarding the documents that we received? And Sarah, I might just have you quickly review what we've.
Okay, so since the last meeting, we did get a couple pieces of information. First was revised plan, which did clarify, did use the correct use for parking calculations. So there are sufficient parking spaces onsite. I'm sure you all saw, but you know, there is parking now, additional parking behind the storage building, as well as along the, the fourth drive. That said, speaking of the fourth drive, I did still include it in my staff report, but on further review of the section, I had earlier indicated that, you know, only one drive is permitted, you know, for each, on each parcel. I now have a new interpretation of that section of the zoning ordinance. It, it says that it, following restrictions apply to all properties in commercial and business zoning districts. It does not specify agriculture, so that section is no longer relevant, so please disregard, disregard my, you know, comment.
Essentially, the four will.
The four, you know, meet, meet our zoning ordinance, our current zoning ordinance. We all know they're living documents. We also did receive, I had some information for you tonight. There was a letter from the road commission, in addition with a revised plan, which does show the commercial entrance, the, the, the fourth entrance, the southernmost entrance. There also was an email from their representatives indicating that, you know, five acres of barley will be planted in the year 2024. I do just want to flag for the commission that is a year after their anticipated completion date for their facility. So I don't know if we want to discuss that, because again, keep in mind, five acres of planted crops is a requirement of a tasting room. So if, if those acre, if that acreage goes in after the building is constructed, I mean, there's that year gap. So I don't know if we want to talk about perhaps a performance guarantee, like what, what could, is there a way we could condition it so it could, that standard, that requirement could be met? That's, you know, I'm happy to assist with that discussion, but you know, that ultimately does need to be agreed upon by you guys and obviously the applicants. And then I did also prepare a memo, which has already kind of been touched on. The lots have been combined since the last meeting, and we are still, we have the parcel number, but we're still waiting on the county for an address. So any motion on the project, you know, should not include an address, and if you want to include a parcel number, use the new parcel number.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Sarah? So, in, in going through the memorandum that Sarah prepared dated September 12th, 2022, I'm starting on page two of 14, section 9.8, L1. We, the licensing, has, has that been received yet? So that would be a condition that the appropriate licensing would have to be in order before the project would be fully, fully operational. L, L2, the lots were combined, so that one's okay. We don't need a condition for that. L3. I, I get, you know, when I, when I looked at that and knowing that there has to be five acres of planted crops is, what, what's prohibiting, let's say, the, the crops from going in next year in, in the spring, or whenever you would do the field prep and plant? Yeah, if you, yeah, if you, I'm sorry, if you would, please.
The question, what's preventing the crops from going in this coming year? The only conflict is the construction considerations and what's going to be happening onsite at that time in conjunction with the ag part of the project. There's no other conflicts other than, other than that.
Okay, I, and I'm, what, what is entailed in like the, in, in getting the, the ground ready, aside from, I imagine, plowing and disking? Is that something that could be done in a timely enough fashion that it would kind of articulate with, with the construction? Because it's really, that, that's sort of like the, the, one of the key pieces in our, in our ordinance, and as Sarah pointed out, we could look at, I mean, I guess the, sort of the three, the three choices, or three considerations would be, if there's, if there are no crops planted, then, you know, you couldn't get final approval on the project, and that would be a, a holdup. The other would be to, if, if there was some challenge with the site or there had to be more dirt work done, look at planting a portion of the five acres and getting it in the ground and growing in 2023, or some type of a performance bond that would ensure that the, that the, that the crops are there. Is that, did I address that?
Yeah. I, I think those are, you know, potentially feasible options. I mean, I would prefer to see them planted, I mean, because it is a requirement, but I do understand, like, the front of the site is more narrow than the rest, but at the same time, it is also a 31-acre site, but also there are, you know, it's, it's, it's not flat.
So I, I, what, in, in this climate, what, what is the optimum time for planting the, the barley?
The optimum ti, the optimal time for planting barley is in the spring. I, I don't suspect we're going to have any issue, at the very least, preparing the soil this coming year in 2023. I don't see that being an issue. In terms of executing that part of the vision for the project, it's, it's just going to be a, kind of a, a negotiation with time and getting the planting completed. That's it. But it, we're, we're very aware how important that part of the project is, and we'll be executing on it in perfect world scenario in harmony with the completion of the construction. in perfect world scenario in harmony with the completion of the construction.
Rick, can I ask a question?
Yes.
What is the anticipated construction completion time? It's kind of a loaded question, but.
Around the end of summer, two thousand twenty.
Twenty-three.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm teasing.
You finished.
Yeah, yeah. No, the, it just, this, I, I, I realize this project is kind of drug on for quite some time. And the, the, the perfect world scenario is that, you know, by the end of Q three, twenty-three, construction is complete and the, the site is ready. However, we've had our fair share of operational supply chain disruptions that have caused a lot of delay in the project. So, it's, yeah, we're TBD, but two thousand twenty-three is the goal.
I think, just to kind of head onto that, I mean, anything less than like a performance bond or something that would ensure your planting and prevent them from continuing, you know, with the build, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, if, if, let's say that there was no consideration of a performance bond, then we would be hard pressed to approve that if it wasn't, if there was not some kind of condition attached to it. So, I'm just trying to think of. It, I mean, just, I guess when I was thinking about it. It, it just seemed to me that, you know, tilling five acres of, of land and getting barley planted would be a sort of a pretty straightforward operation. But not knowing, you know, never having done that, I can't, I can't speak from experience. But I think, well, maybe just wanna put a pin in this and come back to it in a little bit. I, I just wanna let that roll around my head a little bit.
Can I ask another question? Is it unreasonable to plant the crops while you're doing construction? I mean, is it gonna interrupt, you know, performance of the crop or the yield or? I'm not a farmer, so I don't really know these.
Great question. I also have never farmed barley. So, I'm, I'm, I'm restating what's been told to me, that it would, it would be smartest for us to wait until the construction of the facility dies down and then focus, essentially focusing on one thing at a time. I'm kind of the proxy in this conversation because it won't be me that's farming. But we will be working with the local farmer to execute that vision. And if the, the timing nature of that tilling and planting is, if it ends up being an issue, we can reevaluate the timing and, and pull the trigger as needed. I'm, yeah, I, I have never farmed barley, but, yeah, well, we're, we're more than happy to work, you know, with, with you guys to make sure that that happens the way that it needs to happen to set a precedence for the township.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
Just about future use, so like, you know, further than next year, right? Are you gonna plant five acres plus for production then? Does that all go into production? Do you use that all?
No, the plan, the plan with our, call it estate grain, is to have a special set of, a special crop that's dedicated to special product that's made on site. But beyond that, the five acres is probably, again, this is just based on our, our previous conversations internally. The five acres is, is our goal for, for farming on the property.
Part of that because the terrain is what it is, because it's very steep, I'm sure. I mean, it'd be silly to farm in those steep hills.
Yeah, well, to your point, Sarah, while we are on thirty-one acres, a lot of the property is currently inhabited by trees and vegetation. So, the, the spot, the, the area that we have is very specially carved out. It happens to be almost exactly five acres and it's a, it's a really nice section of land for crops.
So, just another question, is five acres to be like maintained in perpetuity, like during operation or is that, is that just kind of?
Well, there's not much detail in our ordinance. It's, the requirement is there must be five planted acres of crops. I would, I would take that to be, you know, at all times of operation, there needs to be a minimum of five planted acres of crops. We're the intention, obviously, you wouldn't be growing anything in the winter. But, you know, during planting seasons, like it would need to be, they would need to be planted, yeah.
For usage in production or whatever you're doing to sustain your farming, right?
Well, I, I guess my, my thinking is that I would really like to see something going in, in next, next spring, just so there can be, some, some ground can be broken and some, some seeds planted and a crop going in. And it just, I, I would encourage you to rediscuss that with like the construction managers and the other people on your, your team to see if there would be like a window. I, I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Commissioner April a question, since you're engaged in, in some farming. How, what would be a reasonable amount of time to work up five acres of open land?
That's, that's a reasonable question without seeing that ground. It's not just a matter of working it up. Sometimes you've gotta kill some of the weeds or material that's there. And so realistically, if you're looking to kill some of the broadleafs, you might wanna put something on it this fall to accommodate that tillage in the spring. The, the trouble is if you don't do it properly, you end up with just the seeds from all the existing plants being reseeded back in the soil. And so, it's kind of important to knock that back thoroughly. And so, I, I kind of understand Chris's standpoint that you, you really should be, I'm looking at some hay ground right now that I should be spraying with some broadleaf sprays to keep the broadleaf weeds out. And so, technically, he probably should be doing that right now to, then he could work it, you could work it in the spring. You wouldn't really wanna work it right now, because then you're gonna have erosion issues in the spring, unless you put some sort of cover crop in, and that's feasible too. But I always say October first is about the deadline that you want to be putting in sort, any sort of cover crop in. So, anything past October first here, you could end up with a field that's laid, laid open and nothing growing in it, which would be detrimental.
Okay.
He's got about ten days to do something as far as tillage goes and I can't see that happening. Now, can he do it in the spring? Yes. Will it, will it be as good a crop? Probably not, because it's not taken down properly, rather than just tilling all the seeds back in the soil and just regenerate what's there. It's not the right way to go about it.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a tough one.
Yeah.
I, I think, my personal opinion is, being in construction too is that I'd be surprised if you're done in two thousand twenty-three. So, I don't think it's a concern. I think it's, you know, realistically, he's not gonna open till twenty twenty-four, just knowing what I know about construction and the things. And so, if he's ready to plan twenty twenty-four, I think we're, we're on target. I would be very surprised if he could get that done in a year.
Well, that was, I'm sorry, that's my kind of a question is, if you're, you haven't really kind of even started the project and you're anticipating to open in maybe the end of October, November of next year, the crops would, I mean, they wouldn't be growing or being in the process anyway, right?
Right.
So.
He's prepping the field by next fall.
So, is the, is the premise that it has, the crops have to be planted for, in order for them to be able to open? Or is it?
Yeah, I guess my understanding, the way our ordinance reads, in order to operate a tasting room in an ag district, you have to be, have at least five acres of.
Planted.
Planted of whatever, whatever crop that, that would be.
But if it's not.
If it's winter time, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
But if he, I mean, if you're planning on doing it the spring of two thousand twenty-four, I guess their, their operating start time and the crop time, they're not aligning, like.
Yeah, and that's, that's the challenge, but we, we have to have some way of ensuring that they, they will go in and typically, it, it, would, would like, would our council hammer out like a performance bond agreement or how does that work?
They could if, you know, the commission and, and Chris would be all, all right with going that route. So, I mean, again, so these requirements, I mean, they can be met, like as is, as was submitted, or they can be conditioned. So, if the commission, you know, does wanna condition it, it's fine. It's just, I want to, assuming all ducks are in a row, you, you file your land use permit, I wanna know if I can be, if I can issue a land use permit without the crops permit, uh, without the crops planted. I view it as I would not be able to do that because you don't have planted crops. I can't issue a land use permit because you don't meet that requirement yet, unless there is a condition that the planning commission puts in there, like it's just a performance guarantee or something. Does that, does that make sense? Is there a way you can clarify that?
So, maybe conditioning that with a performance guarantee would be the, the way to hand, the way to handle it because looking at, you know, the amount of prep work to get the five acres ready and the optimum time for planning, that, you know, it's probably not gonna happen this year. And if you did it in the spring, you may not have the, the yield that you're, you're hoping for. So, I'm, look, looking at just putting a condition in to establish a performance bond.
To ensure that planting, five acres is planted within so many years of issuance of a land use permit? Is that language, you know, sufficient for everybody, all, all parties?
Okay. L four is provided, L five provided. Under L six, the maximum size of the tasting room should be two thousand square feet. And in the plan.
Tasting room is one thousand nine hundred and seventeen square feet.
Okay.
That's taken from their land use and parking data.
So, would this, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Would this just be making sure that they don't exceed that two thousand square feet then?
Yeah.
Okay, so a condition.
And I'm only kind of recommending that just, so everybody's on the same page, just because I do understand, I mean, during past discussion and even in the narrative, there's going to be some intermingling of the visitor center and tasting room and I wanna ensure that the tasting room is kept separate and it is only two thousand square feet.
Okay, so we could have a conditioned tasting room not to exceed two thousand square feet. L, L seven is provided, L eight, L nine are all provided, tens provided, elevens provided. Twelve is provided with the revised plan showing the parking. The only part of that is the snow storage. And that, that'll just be, it's up to the applicant to maintain it out of the, off the right of way. Section nine point two B, one through three are provided. Okay, need to propose special land use. That explicitly indicates reuse.
What I, what I mean by number four and five is although that information isn't adequate, I would, I, what I would argue is adequately like stated, it's, it's implied. So, I'm just adding, you know, you know, it's a, indicates reuse of industrial building and promoting agritourism, which is, you know, part of the area and, you know, it's part of the need for it and also indicates reuse of industrial building and promoting agritourism. It's, it's essentially the same thing.
Okay, so we don't need any further action there. Nine point three. Let's see. There was. The general standards were all met. It looks, like with it, that, under two, they stated that no lodging would be provided.
I would encourage the commission, discuss these standards and come to a decision if they have been met. That's part of the reason why, I mean, like I flagged a couple of things, but, you know, ultimately, it should be the commission who.
Okay.
Who finds that the sta- these standards have been met.
Okay. Nine point three A one.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, that, that has been met. A two.
Yes.
A three.
Yes.
That's been met. A four.
Matt.
Yes.
A five.
Matt.
Yes.
Matt. A six.
Yes.
Yes.
A seven.
Matt.
Yes.
A eight.
Yes.
Yes.
A nine. You wanna go one at a time or? Um, yeah, probably so. Nine I one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Yes.
Six.
Yes.
Yes.
Seven. Now, in, in seven, in the chief's report, you had a concern about on the, coming in from the South Drive, going around, no, it was at the, was it the?
South Drive.
South Drive and getting like a, a ladder truck in there, would there be room for another vehicle or vehicles to pass once the ladder truck was stationed? Is there enough room to do that there?
I mean, I only need access for ladder truck at one end and the other. So, there are two different dimensions that we look at. Twenty foot is the baseline. And then for a ladder truck, due to the outrages and things that are on it, they look for a little bit more width, about a twenty-six foot width for an aerial fire apparatus for an access lane. So, that, which looks like it can be accommodated on the north end. But with that said, and that would still give me access. would still give me access to a major portion of the building, which is, in the, in the codes, it always says access to one side. This building's got a bunch of sides. So it gives me pretty good access for if I need to get aerial ladder in there, or aerial truck in there, I, if I can get it through the north, I'm good there. But I'll still need at least a 20 foot wide access lane on the south end where we're definitely to get to the back. Because if that ladder parks, ain't nothing going around it typically.
Okay. And currently, or in the proposed plan, there is on the north side, north, there is 26 feet?
The only place that it looked like it might be touchy would be in the, the drive coming in, the farthest north drive would come in, might be 24 foot width, which I, I think we can more than accommodate that variance on that, because that's not where the truck's going to park.
Okay.
It's going to pull into the parking lot area and there's plenty of width there.
Okay.
If I may.
Yes.
You mentioned the west side of the building. Is there, it's kind of hard to tell, I guess, if there's good access on that side, or is that something that you would be able to accommodate the other sides, so you wouldn't necessarily have to get on that west side?
There is a, a touchy spot when the addition gets built on the south, southwest corner. I can't really tell from the plans. I have to go on site, but it looks like it gets pretty narrow there, so we, we should still have 360 degree access to the whole building, just using that standard 20 foot access lane. So it, being able to drive around the building is great, but if that addition impinges on that, that, if it just narrows right there for a short spot, I'm not going to lose my mind about it, but if we keep infringing or approaching on that, then I would be concerned. But it, it looks like we can, it looks like everything is clear all the way around for us.
So is that something we should condition, that they need 360 degrees access to accommodate emergency vehicles?
Through the ladder, I just need 100, I need to get within 150 feet of all sides of that structure.
Okay. So look at putting a condition on 9I7, that there has to be. 360 degree access?
Just per the fire chiefs.
Okay, need access per, per fire.
Fire chiefs discretion.
Chiefs report. Okay.
I'd ask, is that, I mean, I.
Go ahead.
I just, I, he's, I think in the plan, he's trying to preserve some property and make it greenway and not make everything asphalt. And what, what you're looking at is asphalt all the way around it, so you could get to it? That, the only side that you can't really access is that south side, and that would be going across the lawn, which in the summertime would be fine, but in the wintertime, you'd have to keep it plowed out, so you can make that access point. I just think of many buildings that we have in the township and even the city has, they don't have that access to them. They, they can't get around buildings 360 degrees. I, I know it's important to you. I just, at what expense do we, do we put more asphalt down and keep it plowed out? I'm not, I mean, whatever it takes, you got to be safe, but I'm not sure that that south end, that little bit across the south end is that important. But not, not to go against Chief Tampa's request. I just think there's very little green space there, and that's the one place we got it. Now we're going to put a road in there. Does that make sense? And maybe that's all right, maybe that's something you want to do, I don't know. Just, we always, we always look at trying to have as little impervious surface as we can with the project.
Yeah.
And now we're requesting more. And it's a safety factor.
I don't think that's what Chief Tampa said at first. Is that right?
Yeah, I, I agree with the aesthetics on it, and I'm all for more green space. I would be concerned not just for this building, but for the warehouse back there. That is, that, that drive also provides access, and if that drive is not there, then we have to drive to the north end and depend on being able to get around the production facility and back down to the warehouse, which then that little narrow spot becomes a choke point for us as far as vehicles and traffic and.
Okay, so maybe we're talking about two different things, or maybe I'm, maybe I'm mistaken. I think he's still planning on putting the drive in on the south end of the property. It's just not going to be real close to the building.
Yeah, oh, that, yeah.
That's all right?
Yeah, it's actually right on the.
Property line.
Yeah, that one, yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, so you don't necessarily need something. So, so really, we don't need a condition.
Okay, so seven is, is.
As long as the drive is going in on the south property line, we're all right. Good.
Okay.
I'm glad we clarified.
Oh, thank you, thank you. 9II deals with the screening.
Trees planted in a certain section, but nothing on the south. There's one there, maybe?
Isn't the, the south side, if you're going?
Yeah.
Right, but i- isn't this kind of some rolling terrain here that would block, be, if you're going that way, it would be?
Not too much.
Okay. So we would need some, something planted, some trees, some type of buffering on the south side?
Well, it, it's up to, I mean. We, I, there's one there, it shows one, maybe two there. There's one right near the drive. I don't know if that's going away or coming. Were you planning more in there, Chris?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not sure you guys are looking at right now.
Uh, section, section along the road for screening, south end along, along the roadway. Doesn't show any trees in there, but in the parking area, it shows trees.
Um, I, our, our plan is to buffer between the road and the facility with, with greenery. I mean, that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then, 9II has been met with.
Well, it's not the whole property line. It's just where the use is going to be. I mean, the building is going to be.
It's not along, it's not all size rear and rear. It's just with a.
It's, I mean, so, so yeah, so the plantings are here. There, there aren't plantings here, and I don't believe there's plantings along the rear, but again, it's, I mean, in the back of the property, it's, it's not all flat. I'm not quite sure. Screening would be necessary, especially when we get our planted crops, but.
Okay.
So.
Got it, Matt?
That's Matt. Okay, section 8.3, site plan review application procedures. Three. We're still waiting for letters from some of the other public works departments.
Yeah, which is consistent. I mean, this is one that can be conditioned.
Yeah, condition, we need the letters. Okay, section 8.4, requirements for site plan approval. One has, has been provided, that's. Two, provided. Three is provided. Four is provided. Five is provided. Six is provided. Seven is provided. Eight is provided. Nine is provided. 10 is provided. 11 is provided. 12 is provided. 13. Can I just do a range of numbers and then say provided? I'll do that. 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28 are provided. 29 is non-applicable. 30. This deals with location size and specifications for all signs. We, we'd have to condition that, that on the, on the plan, they would list the location and dimensions of signs. 31 is provided. 32, trees are planted in front of the property. And, Chris, you said you'd be planning additional, doing additional landscaping on the property?
Yes.
So. That's provided. 33, 34, provided. 35 is non-applicable. 36 and 37 are provided. Now we're at section 8.5, the review and approval. And this is where we have to indicate our, our, the, our findings. B1, all required site plan and application information has been provided as specified in this article, and our findings are that all required site plan and application information has been met, that are specified in this article. Two. All permits and approvals from outside agencies have been secured, and we have a, that's a condition, that's conditioned that all of the permits and approvals from outside agencies have to be provided prior to the, was it the land use permit being issued? Three, adequate essential facilities and services. Our, our findings are that this is a former industrial, agri-industrial plant that's on a county highway maintained by Lillano County, and the site currently has four driveways. The south driveway will be maintained, and there will be probably some increase of traffic on, on the highway, but not enough to create a, a concern from the county road commission. Let's see. Four, all applicable standards of agencies, including but not limited to township fire. Our findings are that, that there would be a condition that all of the agencies have to submit their documents or endorsements in order to have the project go forward. Five, compliance with non-zoning ordinances adopted by township, including but not limited to private road ordinance. We're not dealing with any private roads on, on this property. Number six, all buildings and structures shall be designed, constructed, operated, maintained, as to be harmonious. The, the findings are that proposed building and additions will be commercial in nature, but will be improving and cleaning up the, the abandoned industrial site. The four driveways will be maintained, and there's really no impact to the, the schools in the area, and at a minimum, this has met the Elmwood Township requirements. Number seven, the building structures and entryway there too are, are situated, designed, and screened, buffered. The project consists of additions to the existing processing facility. Healthy existing trees will be preserved on the site, and the building site sits several feet below the public road grade, and this helps screen the property. On the west side, the back part of the property, there is some rolling terrain that would act as additional buffering. Eight, all buildings are accessible to emergency vehicles, and pursuant to the chief's report that he gave, he feels as though he can get the equipment in, and the critical consideration in the wintertime is keeping that south driveway open and accessible to emergency vehicles. Number nine, complete and safe pedestrian, non-motorized vehicular circulation. The vehi, the vehicular circulation will consist of people visiting the, the, the location and the staff coming and going from work, and any deliveries of, of supplies and equipment.
Sorry, the italicized is what was in the application, so if, if you want to just, you don't necessarily need to read all of.
Okay.
The italicized.
Okay, thank you. Number 10, the percentage of impervious surface has been limited to the extent practicable, and we find in the application and on the most recently submitted plan, the south driveway will be some type of non-continually hard surface product, if that makes sense. It's not going to be paved over, it's going to have some type of permeable condition to it. 11, efforts have been made to protect the natural environment. The application is, indicates the development and maint, excuse me, ma, maintenance of green spaces. 12. The stormwater runoff, the plan sufficiently addresses the stormwater runoff in the, the parking lots and roadways. 13.
That would be determined by the drain.
Right, so that'd be conditioned by drain commissioner. 13. The proposal furthers the goals and objectives of the master plan. And let's, I'm trying to think of how to state this. This is a rehabilitation of a derelict agricultural industrial site, and just based on the proposed plan would be an improvement over what is there now. Anyone have, I should have asked earlier, anyone have anything to add on these subsections? I, I didn't mean to get going quick, so.
You're doing a great job.
Okay, so even, even though our, our mast, in our master plan, we don't exactly address rehabilitating sites like this, but.
Be great to discuss later today.
Yeah, so, but I, I think from previous presentations by Mr. Fredrickson and his group, and the plans that they've submitted, it, it looks to be an improvement. So I, I would think that this would improve the, the rural picture of, of Elmwood Township. Section 9.3, standards, requirements and findings for special use approval. Let's see.
So again, this is another section where I didn't, you know, say if things would be met, so I would encourage the commission as a whole to, you know, determine if these standards have been met.
Okay. A1.
Yes?
Matt.
A2.
Yes.
Okay. A3.
Yes.
Yes.
A4.
Yes.
Yes.
A five.
Matt.
Yes. A six.
Matt.
Yes. Now, earlier we had condition of information from the drain commissioner. And I'm just wondering if we need, do we need to have a condition on six since we have a condition dealing with the storm?
It may have been a little bit too, I think I copy and pasted the same section, so we already went through this.
I was gonna say that's. Oh, I looked, okay, I thought it looked kind of familiar, okay. Yes, we did, okay.
I'm so sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
So yeah, page twelve of fourteen and thirteen of fourteen, we already went through. All good.
You've, you've got a chairman, this is very linear, he just goes right, right down the list. So we do have on page fourteen, these are some suggested. These are some of the conditions that were suggested in our, by the review. And then also looking based on our discussion tonight, so.
One has been done.
One has been done, so that's, we've got that checked off the list. Two. The, the snow storage would not be in the right way. So we'll just leave that as a, as a condition. The license, the licenses have to be in place prior to operation, so three would remain in place. Four. This is the five acres of, of planted crops. And in our earlier discussion, Commissioner April gave us a rundown of what it takes to get the land ready. And, and just looking at how construction tends to go, the, your, your goal is to be open in twenty twenty-three. But we probably should, in order to make sure that the acreage is, is going to be planted. Is, is this where we would recommend a performance bond? And then the.
So based on, if I may, my scribbles, prior to issuance of a land use permit, performance guarantee or other such documents deemed sufficient by council to ensure crops will be planted within one year of commencement of construction. I mean, would that be? I mean, we could change that to two years, to one point five.
One year's, I think.
I think one year. And in terms of, so we don't, we do not need to set the dollar amounts for the performance?
No, don't set that now.
Okay. Are the commissioners okay with that?
Yes.
Yes. Is the applicant okay with that?
Yes.
Number five, we had a condition that the tasting room can, cannot exceed two thousand square feet. Six. Sorry, I better.
So that's the section that's specific to tasting rooms.
Okay, so that, that will remain. Seven, property owner is responsible for obtaining all applicable permits that remains. Signage, we, we need to get a, a better idea of the location and dimension of the, of the signs.
It's just copy and pasted from our zoning ordinance regarding lighting.
Okay. Number nine, we'll just need to see a, did we see a complete outdoor lighting plan?
Yes, that was included on the original supplemental.
But not, not on this one?
And it was made available for you at your last meeting.
Okay. So. This is just a condition that it must comply.
Yeah, so it must comply, yeah, so it's copy and pasted.
Okay, so that that would that would remain. Ten. Landscaping shall be maintained. And eleven. What's the?
We need an as-built.
As-built, okay.
And I just would make two additional based on, you know, discussion and input from our fire chief. The southernmost entrance, entrance must be maintained in the winter for emergency access. And also, I don't know if it was referenced this evening, but it's my understanding that with the fire, with the water suppression tanks, the township does need to be granted an easement in order to use those. So that easement needs to be, you know, prepared, executed and recorded. And that would, you know, be done obviously in accordance with council.
Okay, before we conclude our deliberations and, and go toward a motion, Chris, do you have any questions for us?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioners have any other questions for, to be considered before we look at the, the motion? The chair will offer the, the motion to approve SPR SUP two zero two two hyphen zero five, the request by the TCWC Holding Company LLC for an expansion of previously permitted distillery, tasting room offices and visitor center. This motion is based upon previously found findings of fact that specify the basis for the decision along with the following conditions. And we just.
As previously discussed.
As previously discussed. And this would be for the the, the current parcel under consideration is zero zero four hyphen zero zero eight hyphen zero zero nine hyphen two zero. Address to be determined by the.
County.
Leland County. Make that motion? We have a, we have a motion.
Support.
We have support. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good luck with your project. B. IB, discussion on master plan. Boy, five years goes quite quickly.
Not quite there yet, but yes.
No, but it's, you know, it's always good to start a little bit early so you're not having to burn the midnight oil, so.
So if, if I may, so every five years, the commission should be reviewing its master plan and deciding if we want to kind of do an overhaul or just, you know, touch base on a couple of different sections. You know, I bring it to you guys just a little bit earlier just because we are starting to get closer and closer to budgeting season. And if we are going to be sending this out, we need to budget for it. It's been five years and I would, I mean, you guys are significantly more familiar with this area, but it has changed a lot. I know that, even as someone who's relatively new. So I would imagine that, you know, the commission might want to consider sending us out for, you know, further, a deeper dive into revisiting a whole. I don't want to say the whole thing, but there are some sections that I know we've had some issues with. Perhaps, you know, a little bit more detail or perhaps a little bit more actionable items or objectives of each zoning district, trying to find more feasible ways to preserve our agricultural land. Looking at what, what other neighboring communities are doing. And if we are going to do a deeper dive, I will say respectfully, my office does not have the time to do that deep dive. So it would be wise to consider, you know, planning to send this out, to have a, just a planning firm review and work with the commission on master plan. But ultimately, the decision is, is up with, up to you on how, how much work, if we believe our master plan is sufficient or not.
Well, one of the things that occurred to me with respect to Elmwood Township being a majority of its land is zone agricultural. In other townships, they have ordinances that deal with farmland preservation. And that's sort of a two-edged sword. I mean, it, the first edge, you know, enables land that's currently in active farming to remain in active farming. The other side of that is if the people farming it decide that they can't do it anymore due to age or health, if they can't find somebody else to come in and take over the farming operation, you know, you, you're stuck with, you know, property that it, you know, you couldn't really use it for anything else, so. But there are, are communities that have decided that that's really important. The other thing is we, we've dealt with short-term rentals and that's sort of, you know, in a way changed the complexion of housing in our area. Just the traffic. I mean, so I think that, you know, we have some areas in our plan that we should probably take, you know, I'm, I'm thinking would need a fairly in-depth review and and maybe having, working with an outside consultant would, you know, give us some, some assistance. Not that we're not capable of doing it in-house, but, you know, to, to try and visualize what we're going to need in the next five years and beyond. It might, it might be good to have, have some additional help. I mean, that's just my thinking on it.
If I may, I was kind of reading through it a little more today. I mean, from what I'm reading, it seems like this plan is really not much different than the one from nineteen ninety-nine. And this plan was established based on a survey that was sent out in twenty thirteen. So even when it was implemented in, and approved in twenty eighteen, it was kind of old then based on public surveys. So I was wondering, like, in the twenty eighteen, was there any? Do you know any?
I would need to look into that. I mean, some of our wonderful commissioners who've been on the, they might know off the top of their head, but.
Yeah, it was, it was looked at pretty seriously this last time through. And we redid this one. We spent time looking at the plan and seeing where the faults were. It's hard to pass this to somebody else to say, here, make us a master plan. You really need to look at your master plan and see where the problems are, see where you see faults. You can't, in my opinion, you can't hand this to somebody and say, we want a new master plan. You just magically make it appear. What's wrong with your master plan and how can we correct it? That's what they're going to ask. I've been through this many, many times. And so you, so you're right, look at it, spend some time with it, find the errors, find, find problem areas and correct those and get that straightened out. At least have that ready for a company rather than spin your wheels or send out a survey. But most, most of the township presidents aren't, they don't know what we, that we have a master plan, much less what it says. So I think it's important that we as a commission can say, well, here's where we think we're, we're failing in our master plan. Can you help us rewrite this? Not just, give us, give us a new map.
Good, good observation.
I agree with that, but I also think that getting some outside eyes on it to just see. I haven't read a ton of other master plans, so I really don't know what other, what kind of, what other master plans are looking at. You know, so I'm only, I'm seeing what we're looking at, which is, which is awesome because we have a lot of great things to kind of dig into. And I agree that we know our input will, will be very important. But I just like the idea of getting a second set of eyes and not necessarily running through the whole thing, but those other trends out there that we might just not be aware of or, yeah, just it. I guess for me, when I read that, you know, much of the text is the same as from nineteen ninety-nine. I just know a lot's changed in about twenty-five years. And I'm not saying that it has to change, I just think it would be worth a second set of eyes, outside of the eyes that have looked at it all along to just at least, you know, confirm or, so yeah, it looks great. You know, this is right up to par with what similar townships are doing or what they're focusing on. That's, but that's just my personal opinion of just getting second set of outside eyes on it.
I think, two, comparing the, the census demographic data from our current census, going, you know, back ten years and just looking at the, at the change. And we did do a survey and, as I recall, in a survey, when we mentioned short-term rentals, people didn't seem to have too much of a problem with short-term rentals because we didn't have any short-term rentals. And then when short-term rentals started coming in, it sort of kind of came to the, you know, more of a, a fine point discussion. So I, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, maybe we should have just a workshop session on this to take a look at that, to identify what we, what we want to do.
Okay.
All of us take a look at it.
I would, I would add to that. I think that that's a great place to start. I really, I really think we need to, it needs to be our master plan, not some firm downtown Grand Rapids. It needs to be our master plan for our township. And the best way to look at that is to look at your master plan and see where the faults are. Now, I will disagree with Kendra, that there are significant changes in the master plan from years before. And then Rick, to your point about short-term rentals, I'm not sure that the master plan is a it's a tool, it's a broad brush, this is what we're looking for in a township. And I don't think it really deals with specifics of, of short-term rentals or whatever. And so I'm not trying to, but I, but I think it's a, it's a broad brush. This is kind of what we want to be. We want to be a bread and breakfast community of Traverse City, basically. We don't, do we want commercial, do we want industrial? Those are the things that your master plan addresses. And if we do, where do we want them? Those are, and to give that to, to a firm and say, well, we don't know where we want industrial or even if we want industrial, we have to, we have to make those decisions here on a, on a township level.
Well, agreed. I think the, the having a workshop session would really be a, a good idea. Sarah?
Well, I'm, I'm still going to recommend the township budget to send this out. Because again, I've, I've been doing the parks and rec plan in-house. And it, it has been a lot with, you know, public meetings, public hearings, reviewing all of the land use permit applica- it's, it's been, my office has been rather busy. I, I.
Well, I, I think, you know, getting a, a line item and then waiting for, you know, I, I would like to have, you know, looking at, you know, the comments about the master plan so far. You know, let us have the first shot at it. And then maybe the, the outside help would be in terms of the, the formatting or if we need somebody to do some statistical research or, you know, gather some, some information, you know, pay, pay for that. But I, I agree, it would be hard to have an outside vendor come in with their template and just having us try to.
Oh, and I'm not suggesting that.
No, 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 no.
Apologies if I was unclear about that, yeah, but yeah.
But I, I think that what probably would be the, the first step would be for all of the commissioners to do a, a pretty critical read on the plan, you know, apart from our, our workshop. Take some, some notes or highlight some areas. Then we have our workshop meeting where we start off by, what is? what is, was there anything that was unclear to anyone? If there was, we identify that, we try to clarify it. And then if there are some, um, areas that need, um, you know, expansion, uh, we do that. And then at that point, we we look at how is this best best handled? Maybe the outside vendor does the, does the formatting and and some of the research, um, but is that?
Yeah, no, I, I think that's great. Um, I think probably though the first step is understanding what a, the intent and purpose of the master plan. And and really, before you dive into it too much, I think that's probably you gotta wrap your head around that pretty thoroughly.
Yeah, there was, um, the documents of Sarah, so.
I was just gonna say, another thing that might be helpful is we have just, we have just gone through a census. And it would be nice if we we were provided with the census material uh, on the township that has come out of the twenty twenty census.
I I can give you a hand with that.
Is that an easily doable thing?
Yeah, it's it's in what I've been doing for the Parks and Rec. Yeah.
Okay.
And I've been a regular visitor to, uh, Networks Northwest demographic site. And they've got some really nice, uh, pre-built graphs and charts and stuff and, um, and then also, uh, in my prior career, I spent a lot of time on the U S Census site doing demographic research for K twelve education. So I'm familiar with that. And but too, so I can start pulling some of those things out.
Can I just ask a general question to Sarah? How much are we looking to earmark toward budgeting for this? Are we talking as?
I mean, it 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 de- it depends on like how many, you know, public input sessions we wanna do. I mean, I I would aim for, especially for sending it out, to have the minimum of three and then a survey, um, have them at different times, um, again, have, you know, thorough public input. I would imagine it would be around twenty-five to thirty-five. That's what I would, you know, recommend to, um, the township board.
Have you used an outside source to help develop master plans before?
Uh, not in Michigan.
Not in Michigan. Well, maybe give them a big city to.
Yeah, um, I mean, we, I I worked with, you know, resiliency plans for the most part there. Uh, my roles were a little bit different, but.
When would we have to have some money earmarked to?
Uh, budget season is, we need to have an approved budget, you know, by the end of December. So we're getting, yeah, we're getting, we're getting close to it. So, um, again, you know, I'd request, you know, an earmark for it, um, whether or not we use all of it.
Right, yeah, I mean, we don't have to spend everything that's there. We just, well, I guess we, yeah, it's probably good to have that in the budget. So if we run into an area, um, and it is nice to have um, a facilitator that is not a, not a board member or a a commissioner actually standing up in front of the public taking the questions and keeping conversation going.
Chris, you were gonna.
I was just gonna say, is this something that you can get, like a quote, out of generalized, you know, township our size to master plan to get like a general idea of what somebody would?
I I can, I can request that from a couple of different firms.
And I agree with Doug that I think that we should have a couple, maybe a workshop of two. All of us go through on our own, highlight earmark whatever you you see, bring it to the table. And then we kind of work our way and then we kind of whittle it down with all the information that we get. We can see if it works within the budget of what we get for a quote. That's what I'm kind of thinking.
Keep in mind that if we don't do this, it's not the end of the world. Our master plan is still in place and we still have a master plan. It does, it it's recommended that it gets renewed every five years and I'd highly recommend reviewing it. But by the same token, if it, if we spend some time and look at this and and decide not to take the challenge on until next year, it's not the end of the world.
Well, at least we know.
Right.
Right. So I take the suggestion that we try to take a look at this sooner than later than especially if we can do a special workshop. Because, you know, I don't know if you guys took a look at it, but this MSU checklist was, you know, the first ten items definitely apply to us being a little outdated. Things have changed. I haven't read the whole master plan myself, but I think it would do all of us good just to openly talk about it to see kind of where we're at.
So do we want to do a special meeting so that we can sit down and spend some time?
I think, yeah, we wanna set up a a workshop meeting, which would be a special meeting for the workshop. Do we wanna try and establish that date, uh, now or do you, uh, want to, um, have Sarah send out a, a survey or what would be the?
I think we should maybe just take an open dive into it first. I mean, maybe we can do that concurrently, but I think there's probably more to discuss than just a.
Oh, no, I, oh, no, I mean, I was talking about for the workshop session.
To set a date.
Yeah, just to set up a date. I, yeah. So.
What's the first Tuesday in October?
The fourth.
Fourth, uh.
It is Jim O'Rourke's birthday, apparently. That's the only thing I have in my calendar.
Who's birthday?
Rookie. And we do not have a Z B A meeting that night, so.
Okay.
That would be Wednesday anyway, not Tuesday.
Yeah. I'm going to be, uh, gifted with family from out of town then. What does the eleventh look like?
Um, I may not be available. Uh, there's a planning conference.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
That week.
I won't be there.
I mean, it's not till later in the week.
Okay, um. Now, what does the sixth look like?
October sixth?
Yes, October sixth.
I'm open.
I'm open.
I think that should be fine.
Okay. So, um, um, uh, I I think in our our bylaws, it says the 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 chair can request a special meeting so that I'm I'm making a request that we have a workshop meeting. Uh, can, beginning at seven P M. on Thursday, October sixth, two thousand twenty-two at the Elmwood Township Hall.
That's fine. It's just, would there be any issues if we could move that to six? Joe?
It's extremely difficult for me, but I just.
It's just such a long day, but.
They're all long.
So the sixth it is at seven? Okay, thank you. Um, C Capital Improvement Plan, uh, in your, in the packet of, uh, documents, there was the, um, this is just the the proposed, uh, considerations for the, uh, capital improvement plan. And are the dollar amounts that we're in here pretty pretty close or were they just, uh?
So the dollar amounts, generally speaking, I got from the department heads.
Okay.
When I say department heads, I'm talking two people. We have our lovely chief and, um, we have our harbor master. Um, so for, yeah, the Marina and Fire, um, and so they they are essentially estimated. Um, it's it's not a budget. It's just to help the guide, the creation of a budget each year.
Okay. So have have you received from the various, um, areas, the information you need to? So we, the next step would be to have a public hearing?
Yes. It, but I I would, you know, encourage the commission to review and if there are any, like, major issues that you see with this.
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, in two thou- in two thousand twenty-three, uh, there's a proposal to re- to, um, purchase a second ambulance at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then subsequently in, or is it, uh, in two, two thousand twenty-five, we're gonna replace the first ambulance at a cost of three hundred thousand dollars. I didn't know prices on ambulances went down. I thought they went up.
That's correct. I believe the, shall I, Chief, you can probably speak to that. I got, I got an updated number from our supervisor regarding the ambulance. I corrected it. I know in one spot. I did not correct it in the second spot. So I'm I'm going with the more expensive option is the four fifty. That's, that's what it would be.
Yeah, um, I don't have my numbers in front of me. I kind of jumped a little bit when you said four fifty. I'm looking at that. Um, but, uh, the first purchase, um, would be for, um, the second ambulance.
Some, yeah.
Would be to, we'd have to purchase a power load, power cut, um, but some specific components for that ambulance that are kind of pricey. But the second, uh, but to replace the second, we might be able to take that equipment and put it on a new.
Ah, okay. Thank you. That makes sense.
All the Marina funds would come out of the Marina budget? All the Marina improvement, is that a true statement?
Generally speaking, we're, we're probably going to need to get some bonds because it's quite expensive. Phase three was significantly more. But at this time, I mean, it's it's listed as Marina, um, and then, you know, it's it's in combination of grants.
There have been grants maybe for some of this?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
They, the state changed some of their criteria when COVID came to what they were going to send money for, for certain things.
That's why we're, yeah, um, in twenty twenty-four, where it has Marina phase three, it's Marina slash waterways grants.
Okay.
And yeah, phase three A and, uh, phase three B have been funded, um, and we're waiting to submit another app, grant application for two thousand twenty-three.
And the Timberly Water Main Extension, um, I know that was, I think, in the last, uh, plan or some maintenance was, was the expenditure from, uh, the last capital improvement plan just pretty much maintenance on the existing system?
I believe so. Um, and then there's always been in this anticipated to be in a future plan. Those three items have been in the C I P for quite some time. And those costs therefore are expected to be more.
What was it? What's the extension? I know this is way in the future. I'll probably be dead by then, but, um, the Graylikville Water Main Extension, where where would they extend it? Is there any?
Right now, it doesn't go upgrade view very far.
No.
So they could do all of Go-Go potentially.
Okay.
And whether they would or not, I'm sorry, I, maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but it doesn't, doesn't cover much of Go-Go.
It covers that area where we did, there was a condo part of it and it was a split between ourselves and, uh, Grand Travers County.
Don't forget.
On Grand. Oh, I'm talking, I'm sorry, I'm talking Carter. Not your happy.
Right.
Never mind.
It, it comes up, uh, to Pico. I think we discussed this the other day. It comes up, uh, to Pico right now, but doesn't really get much, I don't know.
Well, Sarah, are these figures, uh, firm enough if we were to en- entertain, uh, the possibility of having a public hearing next month or?
Yeah, and if you wanna review just for, um, we do have our, uh, water system and sewer map. They're in our master plan.
Okay. Oh, got that. Thank you.
As far as the planning and the things, the sewer is probably way more important than the water. Everybody's currently got a well and it's working, but, um, a lot of the sewers are failing or septic systems are failing and it'd be nice to, so if we were to budget money, in my opinion, it's far more important, especially around the lake here in the wetland areas, to plan it for septic.
So in order to move this forward, we'll need a motion for a public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to have a public hearing at our next regularly scheduled meeting to, uh, review the capital improvement plan.
Second that.
We have support. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, uh, motion carried.
Sarah, if there's any changes in the numbers, we'll get them before.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, going on to, uh, Jay, old business food trucks, um, in our documents, Sarah had sent us two, um, documents. One was, uh, an ordinance and the other was a, um, licensing, um,
Just have licensing ordinance for food trucks, right?
Yes. So, and in the previous documents that we had, Sarah had collected, um, some language from other communities that have food trucks and, um, there was a little bit of, quite a bit of variation. I mean, most, uh, some of the common things were the hours of operation. They couldn't discharge any wastewater onsite. Trash had to be in approved receptacles. They had to have the appropriate inspections and licensures. I think that the big question that, or one of the things that we we discussed, uh, last time was how many would you have at at one time? You know, would you, would you wanna say that a food truck could be operating Elmwood Township? Two food trucks, um, you know, but.
Can I ask just a general question before we get into the differences between the two? So with the zoning ordinance change, you're not limiting licenses, but with a licensing ordinance, we can
We can, we can, we can set a number.
We can set a number. They have a way around. It's just a general.
Right.
We can put these in these zones.
Yeah, regardless, we would need to amend the zoning ordinance, same, same way we did for short term rentals. So we would need to define it in our zoning ordinance and then have like an additional kind of, um, section and ta- uh, what, I think it's section five where we'd have like a statement, you know, any food truck needs to obtain a license in regards to licensing ordinance, then they reference a number. But yes, if we, if we just amend the zoning ordinance, there would be no cap. Anybody who, you know, would be in whatever zoning district, they would be allowed and and if they met all of the requirements could ap- apply for a permit and obtain a permit. Licensing ordinance gives the township the ability to limit the number. Long winded response.
Long winded. Um, sounds like that's the avenue we were kind of dancing around last time.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't want my comments to sway anyone one way or the other, but I like the idea of having some type of cap on the number of of units in operation. Cause I I just have this vision of the Blue Angels during Cherry Festival and, um, you could see just an awful lot of, you know, without some kind of a cap on food trucks, if if that were to go into effect, you could see a lot of you know, without some kind of a cap on food trucks, if, if that were to go into effect, you could see a lot of, a lot of activity.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
When we, when we brought this up at the last meeting, earlier, we had talked about doing a trial run with a smaller number, maybe three, for example, and maybe we want to do that for one year, for example, and try it experimentally. One thing you have in, in here is that, that the food truck has to be active at least four times in a year to maintain its license, if I recall.
Yeah, I, I did, I know I included a number like that just because, you know.
Right.
Just saying it must be used, I mean, if we don't define it, like what, okay, you use it once, you're open for one day?
There's also, since it's, it's a commercial venture, will be only used in commercial areas, there are, there's a limited amount of places you're going to be able to put a food truck in this, in this township. So I might consider just doing. I mean, I looked at the ordinance, the proposed ordinance and I looked at the, I looked at the, or the zoning amendment and the ordinance and the, it looked like you took the very best out of the other ordinances that I could find and I was very comfortable with it. You know, maybe we should try it for, for three.
So would, would you be thinking of using the licensing ordinance for the cap of three or just having?
Well, we can, we can, we could amend it later on to add or subtract if we wish.
Okay.
I thought that we couldn't do that, didn't we just talk about that?
So the, the way the licensing ordinance is currently drafted, I kind of based it off of our lovely STR licensing ordinance, which, you know, was, was ultimately amended to allow the township board to be able to, to change the number of licenses by resolution. This is slightly different because I do recommend that the planning commission, you know, give their recommendation on the number.
Well, we did that last time when they changed it for STRs.
Well, the number was kept the same. It's, it's still ninety-three.
Okay.
My only, my only problem with any of it, and I, I like the idea if we're going to do it to limit it, but we're going to put this in a commercial district and we think about our commercial district and it's basically M twenty-two, which is a, would be the main area. And that's our worst traffic area, as far as traffic goes, there's nothing worse than M twenty-two coming out of Traverse City. And so I, I understand that there's been some request for this, but we have, obviously we have other commercial areas. We have that along Grand, or Cherry Bend Road also. But we're looking at adding more traffic to our, to our worst traffic areas, just something to think about.
Isn't it open to discussion where we could, where these would actually be allowed to operate?
Everything is still open for discussion.
Yeah.
So in order for the food truck to be on municipal center, that would require action by the township board to allow that, because currently there's no commercial activity allowed.
That's correct, and that's regulated by our parks ordinance.
You're looking at the zoning ordinance portion of this, not the licensing ordinance?
Well, I guess it might be helpful to just kind of clarify, so the, the standards, the requirements of, that are both in the licensing ordinance as well as the zoning ordinance, they're the same.
They're the same.
They're literally copy and pasted just once, not twice. So it doesn't matter which one you're looking at, if we're just kind of like looking and reviewing the requirements.
Jeff bring, you raise an important point, I guess I'm thinking like the Dockside Party Store, they've got some room that they could have a food truck in their parking lot. And they're a hundred and fifty feet from a restaurant that's in current operation, I'm pretty sure.
I don't know which one, I'm not sure you would, could classify Dockside as a restaurant.
No, 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 but I'm just saying, you know, that if, if the owners of Dockside Party Store wanted to bring in a food truck to, you know, sell food. I mean, now you can get like sandwiches there and stuff, you know, pre made, but if you wanted to get, I don't know, gourmet hot dogs or something like that. I think in, in one, it, you had, the food truck had to be, what was a hundred and fifty feet from an existing?
Existing brick and mortar restaurant during the hours for which the restaurant's open to the public, unless the food proj- um, food truck is operated in conjunction with the restaurant or has written notarized permission from the owner of such restaurant. So pretty much it, it does allow, you know, for leeway.
Yeah, the, the traffic thing is one of, you know, that is a, a strong consideration.
The only thing with that though, I mean, I would know is they're, they are parcels, they can be developed for the uses that are allowed. I mean, this is just, this would be adding a new use. And it could, I mean, I, I do, I do understand the point, I hate driving on M twenty-two, I avoid it at all costs.
I think that'll sort itself out, I mean, to be honest, I mean, people, you know, tend to get food or coffee, depending on availability, how easy it is. It's, you know, I think in limited scope, you know, and in the proper places, a couple of these might be a good idea.
Right, if you're, I mean, if essentially if you're going to license and try this out with three food trucks, and let's just say they're all planted between here and Tom's West Bay, I, I don't know how much traffic that would really impact, you know, if you're going into subway or if they're going to Dockside or if they're going to Tom's.
Right, they're going to be traveling the corridor no matter what, for the most part.
Right. If you're limiting it to three, I can see if you got ten or fifteen or.
Yeah, and maybe three is too many, I don't know, it's, but I think.
Right. My, my question, if I may, is the, no, not allowing for any tables or chairs or booths or anything like that? Did I understand that correctly?
What, what letter is that?
P.
Thank you.
Yeah, like pop-up countertops or some other stuff, right?
So that's just within ten feet of the unit, so if you want to, you know, put a table at eleven feet, that's fine. It just can't be right up close to where there, there's people in theory would be lined up or, you know, if there was like any type of generator, you're not like right next to it, that's the intent.
Okay. I, I took it as that.
So it's not going to like just deter seating necessarily?
Right, and we, we can clarify if, if the commission would like, I mean, I'm happy to do that, happy to throw more words down.
Mr. Chair, if I may, has Chief Tampa had a chance to look at these two possible ordinances? And would you take a look at them?
So with, with that, may, may, maybe it would be prudent to continue our discussion into next month and in the meanwhile, if we could forward these to Chief Tampa for his review? Okay.
Were there any, sorry, were there any red flags that you saw, would you like me to make any type of modifications to anything?
I had one picky question. You asked for a notarized statement by the owner of a restaurant if there's a permit granted to allow a food truck within a hundred and fifty feet of that restaurant. When you're talking about an, an other event and there's a food truck, truck, for example, near a farmer's market or something like that, you don't ask that the permit, if it's granted, be notarized? Is there an inconsistency there or is there, it's purposeful?
I view it as, I'm unaware of this other section, so that could be, well, I, I understand it's in the licensing ordinance, I know why I'm requesting a notarized because I, I always personally worry about, you know, some, yeah.
I know why you're requesting a notarized, but I'm wondering why you didn't request it in the other instance.
Oh. It should, it should be requested in both, honestly, I always like notarized signatures because, you know, people do for, again, I like to assume everybody's doing. Everybody's on the up and up, but.
One of the, Mr. Chair, if I may, one of the, just thinking of properties within the township, one of the key properties that might be a good place for a food truck that is somewhat underused might be the old Norris School property.
Mm-hmm.
Norris School property, there's plenty of.
G-Tech.
G-Tech, better than the corner of the.
Cherry Bend.
Cherry Bend, yeah, yeah, no, they've got lots of.
Plenty of. So that might be, you know, if we had specific areas, you know, it might be.
And you have a bus stop there.
Yeah, so that's rather than on twenty-two, I just think it's, it's easy off and you've got light to work with and stuff and so it's. It's, I just, I try to visualize the township and where, where this would work good and that's one spot that seems to be underutilized, it might work good and then work not there.
The other, the other place that might work all right would be on Discovery Pier, on the pier.
During an event or during the day, all day?
During an, for an event, I would think.
Right, right, I think that's been ruled out.
Because there's not enough traffic to support it during the day and you have the access knee rest would be difficult.
And we'd have to look at parking considerations, because that's one thing that I didn't really go into detail in here. I mean, there, we will need to require parking, we will need to amend our parking table in our ordinance.
So which does limit it then?
Yeah, so Discovery Pier would, would probably have an issue with that, but we do have shared parking, so I mean, again, we could, our licensing ordinance could just reference, you know, need to comply with, you know.
I think that's, I think that's important, senior.
Okay, thank you. We are past nine o'clock, so we will need a motion to continue or we would just?
Leave, huh, let's just leave. I'd make a motion that we continue where the agenda is defined.
Okay.
Seconded that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, we will continue. So with respect to the food truck discussion, we'll continue that to be an agenda, old business on our.
October.
October.
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting and, and we kindly asked our fire chief to take a look at, at that and we appreciate that. And just be thinking about, as Commissioner April mentioned, you just, traffic and, you know, thinking of like the Norris location, that ma- that makes.
Makes good sense there.
A lot of, a lot of sense and currently they, they don't really have anything there.
There are no neighborhood commercials, so again, if, if this was approved kind of as is, they could, you know, apply for.
Okay.
I think that's crucial, is finding the right location, I'd hate to see one randomly put in somewhere.
Okay. Anything else on food trucks before we move on? Okay, item K, discussion on zoning ordinance, is there any thing that is sticking out or?
It's after nine, so I'll, I'll just kind of keep this short and brief. I've flagged another section in our ordinance specific to lighting, so if you do review section six, I, I would encourage you to, I would call it the Grinch Clause because according to our li- our ordinance, bare bulbs are not allowed and, I mean, it doesn't specify, it doesn't exempt residential properties. So essentially, all light sources and light lenses shall be shielded and down facing, lighting from exposed bare light bulbs or from bare luminous tubes shall not be permitted. So essentially, holiday lights are in violation of our zoning ordinance and that should not be the case, so that needs to change. So whether or not the, the commission, I would please just look at this section and decide if you want to make portions or all of this section just, you know, specific to commercial and industrial and ag or adding, adding exemptions, I've started working on adding exemptions.
Okay, thank you for catching that. Anything else under K? Item L, comments from chair, once again, thank you for your discussion and the time you spent on reading all of the documents. I just really appreciate all of your hard work, thank you, thank you. Item M, comments from commissioners? Item N, comments from staff?
Thank you all, and also just kind of a heads up, we have an applicant here, I did receive, you know, an application. It's incomplete at this time, you know, once I get more complete application, it'll be on your next agenda. At this time, in theory, that would be October twentieth, but I'm assuming they're going to get up at public comment, so just be aware, this would be for a resort up in the Timberly area, Timberly Hilltop.
Okay, thank you. Item O, public comment on any item?
I'm so sorry, it's, it's, it's been a long day for me, so please bear with me, also just kind of a heads up, I did send the MAP Hill, the MAP amendment request submitted by Jim Hill that's gone to the county, haven't gotten word back yet, but I hope for that to be on the October tenth township board meeting. Obviously, the planning commission doesn't need to attend, but just so, so you are kind of kept in the loop on the status of all of that, you know, if anything changes, I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you. Item O, public comment on any items, we. Limit the comment to two minutes, but if we just have one presenter, I, I would go as long as five minutes maximum. So the second public comment session is open at nine oh six PM, if you wish to make a public comment, please come to the podium and identify yourself.
Actually, Sarah, Clarin already took care of it for me, so Sarah Keever, representative of the applicant for the project that Sarah Clarin did mention. And yes, thank you, I just wanted to clarify that, yes, we have received a review back from Sarah. We are working on making sure that that application is complete and I'm not going to give you any details or updates at this time, but you will be receiving that and then we'll hope to be before you shortly to be able to discuss our application. So thank you and we look forward to seeing you guys soon.
Thank you. We are at adjournment and we need a motion for that.
I would make that motion.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have support, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, we are adjourned at nine oh seven PM, thank you very much, everyone.